We would like to welcome you to our meeting tonight and come back again. We'd like to have you back here again. At this time, we'll have the invocation being led by Janet Gasson and then the pledge by Buddy Palmer.
Let's pray. Thank you, Lord, for bringing us together tonight. Thank you for the honor and privilege of casting our votes to elect the next president of our great country. I pray that you will fill our next year with unusual wisdom and faith during the upcoming term of office. I ask that your will be accomplished in all things. Please be with us tonight as we make important decisions for our city. May we strive to meet the needs of Tupelo with an attitude of unity and love.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance. Attention, salute, prayers.
A very leading to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. At this time, we'll call on the meat caller meeting to order and call on Janet Gasson to make a motion to confirm and amend the agenda and agenda order.
I would like to amend the agenda order. We would add item two point five, and that states in the matter of minutes of the regular minutes of the October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four council meeting and the special call minutes of the October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four meeting.
Can I get a second?
Second.
It has been moved in property second that we would approve, confirm, and amend the agenda and agenda order. All in favor? Oppose is not. We will now move to proclamations, recognitions, and report agenda. Proclamation, do we have any tonight?
We do, and we have a proclamation for our special guest. And Coach Mack, and I go way back, he was coach and a teacher for me. I won't say how long ago, but right before he retired in nineteen eighty-five, I believe, from teaching. So I'd like to read this proclamation for him, honoring him and everyone here. Whereas Alan McDaniel was raised in Myrtle, Mississippi, proudly carrying his hometown roots throughout his life and capturing them in his small, in his book, Small Town, Big Memories. And whereas Alan McDaniel became the first in this family to attend college, earning bachelor's and master's degrees in education as an Ole Miss Rebel, embodying a commitment of learning and service. Whereas Alan McDaniel taught social studies at Malum School from nineteen seventy-two to nineteen eighty-five, later becoming a football coach known affectionately as Coach Mack, leaving a lasting impact on students and athletes. And whereas Alan McDaniel's passion for cars began in his youth and grew into a significant part of his life, leading him to co-found the Blue Sway Cruise in two thousand and three, which has grown into an annual event cherished by Tupelo community and beyond. And whereas Alan McDaniel's dedication to fostering family-friendly, community-driven events like the Blue Sway Cruise has contributed to the growth and vitality of Tupelo's cultural landscape, welcoming visitors and car enthusiasts from all over the country. And whereas Alan McDaniel has served and is ambassador for Tupelo's automotive heritage, sharing his love for cars and history through his work with the Tupelo Automobile Museum, while continuing to build connections and relationships within the community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Tupelo, Mississippi hereby proclaims its recognition and heartfelt appreciation to Alan McDaniel for his decades of dedication and services in our community, his contribution to Tupelo's automotive culture, and his role in fostering an environment of togetherness and joy for all that call Tupelo home. Coach, would you come up here, please?
You sit down now. I accept this, but actually, I need to accept it for the entire club, because if it wasn't for the car club, there wouldn't be a Blue Sway Cruise. They come out and work. They volunteer a weekend of their life to make this cruise happen. Been doing it since two thousand and three. We had three hundred cars the first year, and now we have to cut it off at eleven hundred cars. So it has definitely grown. I hope it's added to the flavor of Tupelo and also to their monetary support. And I got to mention this real quick. When this young man was in the eighth grade, he decided to stay back so he could play an extra year. The first game, he got his leg broke. But I want to thank everybody for being here. I see a lot of familiar faces and family and friends, and just, thank you.
When we were sitting there waiting for the meeting to start, we kept seeing all these people coming in, and we were trying to figure out what in the world is going on. And we found out a very important person here, and Alan and I worked together as school teachers over at Malum, and I believe he's one of the best-looking men over there back during that time. But we're so glad to recognize you for your outstanding work you've done in the school system and then with the cars, all these beautiful cars that we see every year, the Blue Sway Cruise. Recognition of girl and boy scouts, any girl or boy scouts here tonight? Employee recognition.
We do have one. John Belt, come on up, chief. With sincere appreciation, the city of Tupelo recognizes John Belt for fifteen years of dedicated employment with the Tupelo Fire Department.
Any public recognition, we'll start with Chad.
I don't have any.
Janet.
Well, I'd just like to say, yeah, I'd like to say something to Alan. Alan has done so much for this city with the Blue Sway Cruise. It is a major source of income in here. He has done a wonderful job. I love you, Alan. I really do.
Of course, be your...
Yeah, I got to give a shout out to Alan, too, because he and I went to school together at Myrtle. We've come a long way, Alan, since I was over there. So glad you got recognized tonight, and you deserve all the comments and accolades that we could give you. You've done a great job with the Blue Sway Cruise. I'm proud of you as well.
And I would like to just say, we had a busy day today, but whatever happens, we will go on with the future. People voted today, and so I hope everybody got a chance to vote. At this time, we call for mayor's remarks.
Yeah, thank you. And on that, Ms. Nettie, I do want to recognize and thank the veterans and the people that fought to give us that right to vote. I know we have a couple on the council, and I know we have a lot in the room. So thank you for your service and what you've done to allow us to vote today. Got a few things. One, we kind of went over yesterday, or a few that we did. We got our reports back from CBB on our economic impact for Tupelo parking wreck. This year was five point three million, up about two hundred thousand dollars from last year. So congratulations, Alex, and the fine work you've done. Another is our sales tax from last year. We're still fourth in the state, seventh largest city, fourth in the state in sales tax, second in the state as far as sales tax per capita. And dollar-wise, we gained on the first three this past year. So congratulations to everyone and what you are proving and what we're doing to get people in our city. That's it.
Thank you. We will now close the regular meeting, open for public agenda. Public hearings in the matter of public hearings for lot mowing. Anyone here to speak on lot mowing tonight?
Ms. Nettie, can I make a statement?
Yeah.
I don't know if all, everybody here wants to stay and enjoy our council meeting. You're welcome to do so. If you want to, or you might want to go out and celebrate in the hallway. Just saying.
We're going to continue with the meeting tonight. I know we're all real proud of our special honorary tonight, but at this time, we're going to have a matter of public hearing for demolition. And if there's anyone here to speak to that, you may come to the microphone at this time. No one to speak to demolition?
I think we got somebody, Ms. Nettie.
You, if you would like to introduce yourself, and you have five minutes to speak at this time.
My name is Louis Rovantes, and I'm here basically to interpret for these folks that are Spanish-speaking, and they have a house on Kelly Street that the city has given, I guess, the ultimatum to do something with it or have it torn down. And they're just wanting to see if the council members will give them a little time to get the opportunity to get it fixed, because they've got a family member of the owner's son that would like to live in it. They just hadn't had the monies to get it repaired, and the property was in their sister's name, but she passed away, so they've had a whole lot of old deals with that to deal with. And so they're just asking if the city will give them a little time to get it repaired so that a family member can move in it. And that's on the house on twelve oh three Kelly Street that's behind here in Tupelo.
Okay. If you could get with the director of planning, Tanner Newman, and he can kind of direct you as what you need to do as far as getting this in order. There's Tanner back there. He's over the planning department.
Ms. Nettie, let me also say, we're probably going to go ahead and act on it since it's on the agenda, but if you can work something out with Tanner, you know, that we have a record of, you know, what your plans are, and if we can see some progress. But we will go ahead and act on our agenda tonight as it is.
I understand that that property was once a rental property, and then y'all have purchased it, right?
They have.
And typically, owners of houses take better care of them. I know my store is right in front of those houses. And I have to admit, they weren't in very good shape, none of them on that street right there. So that may be something you could work on. Since y'all own it now, you know, of course, you'll have to work with the planning committee and Tanner back there, but you may have a good opportunity there, I think.
Yes, sir. Well, they just want some time where they can maybe get it repaired and a family member move in it. That wasn't their intention to stay vacant. They bought it, and like I said, they bought it about three years ago, and their father lives in California. They originally bought it and it got put in, and the daughter's name, the daughter passed away, and they just, the brothers live in Nashville, and they've got a brother that lives here. They just didn't have the means. And I tell them, if you can find the means to borrow some money, they can get it repaired, and they might, the council members here might decide to let you do that.
We're willing to be supportive of you. If you could just get with the director and work out a plan where we can get this in order so that it won't be still on the demolition list. But at this time, we'll vote on it, and then we'll give you a certain amount of time to work on this.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much for coming before us on this.
And they also, there's also another couple that's beside them, another house that seems to be a problem. I just happened to notice here, you know, that as I was waiting for them, that the house that probably you're talking about next door, and this is, this is...
There's two houses involved.
I just have to know both of them, folks.
Did you give us a story on this house?
This is the one that's, I believe, has been a problem, one that's had the law come over several times, had issues with, I think, drug problems and stuff. This is her daughter that was living in it, and of course, they've tried to help her. But, you know, sometimes the person that doesn't want help, you can't help somebody, and they're trying to see what they could possibly do. The property was in her stepmother's name, that's actually in Mexico, and they were trying to get the property, trying to get the property back in maybe one of their names where they could do something with it, because, you know, they can't do anything with a young lady. They thought that most, maybe they could do is probably possibly get it swapped over and either sell it or do something with it, because, you know, you obviously can't help a child that doesn't want help. And so that's been a problem for them as well.
So right now, it's not in their name?
It's, it's... Okay, well, he said, he says that they just, I just happened to meet up here just a couple of minutes ago. So he says that he's got the property that's, well, they've got a...
There's one at one one nine three Kelly Street and one at one two oh three Kelly Street.
This is the one one nine three. This is the one one nine three, the second houses. And they're the ones that, in the kind of block, stone house that I think that's just been vacant, but they've had actually someone living here. But where they've got actually a bill of sale, I don't think it's really, I don't think they quite understand what it takes to purchase something, not a bill of sale, but a deed. But he's got a bill signed over from the ladies, whose name is Anne, to Mr. Edgar Garcia Ramirez.
Is that the one right across from the church? I think so.
It's the one directly behind bishops and the old farmers. Because there's, I believe, there's either three or four houses right there directly behind them.
Yeah.
The little stone-looking house, which belongs to their father, and then the second one, I'm not sure. I don't recall. There's three or four houses right there. That's the one, one of the problem houses.
Yeah. Well, if, well, in both cases, if you could get with the director of planning and try to work out a plan, they, we will vote on it as we indicated tonight, but they will give, we will give them time to bring it up to standards if possible.
Yes, ma'am.
So let me ask you one other question. So this second house, will it become, will it not be, still be rental property? Well, were you guys on it?
They're going to, they're going to see if they can move in themselves. They're trying to purchase it so they can live in themselves if it's up. This is, this is young lady's daughter, and so I said, I guess they've got agreement from, from a, from a ex-husband's wife, whose name is Anne, Ms. Rosa Carmina Rodriguez Diaz. Is it her name? And this is, this is her ex-husband's current wife.
Okay, well, if you could help them with this, then we will be consider giving them time to try to work it out.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. We will now go to appeals. There are no appeals.
I think that we, we got into the demolition, but we did not call the public hearing for the lot mowing.
I think I called it before that, but I will go back and call a matter of a public hearing for lot mowing. I called for that, then ain't a better response.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, we will go to appeals. There are no appeals. Citizen hearings. Do we have any citizen hearings tonight? We will move, close the public agenda and open for regular session, action agenda. There are no action agenda items. We will now go to routine agenda. In the matter of bill pay for tonight, and Travis Beer, Nettie Davis and Janet Gasson paid bills. Could I get a motion on that?
Second.
Moved in property second that we would approve the bill paying in the discussion. All in favor? Oppose is not.
Make a statement, please. If we amended the agenda to add two point five, is it coming here or is it coming at the end of the session?
That's in the matter of minutes of the regular, matter of minutes of the regular meeting of October fifteenth and special call meeting of October the thirty-first. That must be under the action.
We amended the agenda to add those items as two point five.
Okay, so at this time, we would have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular, regular meeting of October the fifteenth and the special call meeting of October the thirty-first. Could I get a motion? Moved in property second that we would approve both minutes. All in the discussion. All in favor? Okay. Thank you for that correction, of course, Beer. We will now go to matter of advertising and promotional items. Are there any promotional items for tonight? No items, okay? We will go to, move to the next item in the matter of the electric fund audit for FY twenty twenty-four, and we've been given the information. I don't think it's anybody here tonight to speak to that. Okay?
I move that we approve.
Okay, moved in property seconds. Could I get a second?
Second.
Okay, moved in property second that we would approve the electric fund audit for FY twenty twenty-four. In the discussion. All in favor? Oppose is not. Item six, in the matter of MOU with the Department of Finance, House Bill two four six eight, section ten, funding to assist with construction of new fire department and command center.
So move.
Second.
Moved in property second that we would approve the MOU. In the discussion. All in favor? Oppose is not. Item seven, in the matter of new bank account state funds, twenty twenty-four.
I move that we...
Wait just a moment, let's let her lead out. Okay?
Yeah, I move that, that we, okay, this new bank account state funds.
Second.
Moved in property second that we would approve the new bank account state funds. In the discussion. All in favor? Oppose is not. Answer to come back in, please. Item eight, in the matter of state approved holidays for city employees.
Second.
Moved in property second that we would approve the state holidays. Mayor, would you like to give those special days that we are going to be off for Thanksgiving and Christmas?
Yes, the two days will be Friday, November twenty-ninth, that's the day after Thanksgiving, and then Tuesday, December twenty-fourth, the day before Christmas.
Okay. In the discussion. All in favor? Oppose is not. In the matter of lot mowing.
Move that we approve the list.
Second.
Moved in property second that we would approve the lot mowing list. In the discussion. It's narrowed down pretty much so from the original list, I think about three or four items. But all in favor? Oppose is not. Item ten, in the matter of review and approve properties for demolition.
Move that we approve these property.
Second.
Moved in property second that we would approve the demolition. In the discussion. All in favor? Oppose is not. Item eleven, in the matter of approval and confirmation of a permit to the Journal Overlay Committee.
So move.
Second.
Moved in property second that we would approve the additional permits to the Journal Overlay Committee. In the discussion. All in favor? Item twelve, in the matter of an order authorizing the purchase of real property located at two eighteen Barnes Street.
I move that we purchase this property.
Second.
Moved in property second that we would approve the authorized purchase of our real property at two eighteen Barnes Street. In the discussion. All in favor? Oppose is not. Item thirteen, in the matter of an order authorizing the purchase of real property located at two oh six Doja Street.
I move to authorize this purchase.
Second.
Move the property second that we would authorize the purchase. Both of these are located up in Ward Four. One is on Doja, and the other one is on Barnes Street. In the discussion. All in favor? Oppose is not. Item fourteen, in the matter of an order declaring a surplus destruction located at four fifteen South Spring Street.
So move.
Second.
Moved in property second that we would approve this order. Should we, do we need any discussion related to this? This is a area where we purchased property down on South Spring Street, I guess, gravelly, and in that particular area. Farmers market, oh, the farmer's market, I'm sorry. Farmer's market on the South Spring Street. In the discussion. All in favor? Oppose is not. In the matter of approval of Major Thirfae Committee Meeting Minutes September ninth, twenty twenty-four.
So move. Second.
Moved in property second that we would approve the Major Thirfae Minutes. All in favor? Oppose is not. Item sixteen, in the matter of a permit for Dr. Matt Wilson to the Tupelo Police Citizens Board.
Move that we approve.
Second.
Anyone has a comment to make related to Dr. Wilson?
I think you've answered that.
Yeah, okay. Okay. All in favor? Oppose is not. Item seventeen, in the matter of approval of contract for Doc Cooper Kelly Building Renovation, November twenty twenty-four.
I move we approve the contract.
Second.
And it moved in property second that we would approve the contract. In the discussion. All in favor? Oppose is not. Item eighteen, in the matter of approval, final close out change order of a foreign bid, twenty twenty-four zero twenty-one PW Ridgeway Drainage Improvements.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move in property second that we would approve, final close out change order. In the discussion. All in favor? Oppose is not. Item nineteen, in the matter of approval of an agreement for engineering services for the lift station rehabilitation at Colonial Estate Project.
Move that we approve.
Second.
Move in property second that we would approve this agreement. In the discussion. All in favor? Oppose is not. Item twenty, in the matter of approval of Cadence Bank Arena Minutes of September sixteen... Item twenty, in the matter of approval of Cadence Bank Arena Minutes of September sixteen twenty twenty four.
So move.
Second.
Move in property second that we would approve the minutes. All in favor? Oppose's name. Item twenty one, in the matter of Tupelo Housing Authority real permit Tillman Capper.
Make a motion to table. Second.
Move in property second that we would table this to a later date. All in the discussion. All in favor? Oppose's name. Item twenty two, in the matter of Tupelo Housing Authority real permit Kristi Lu.
Make a motion to table.
Second.
Move in property second that we would table to a later date. In the discussion. All in favor? Oppose's name. Item twenty three, in the matter of approval of an agreement with Mississippi United to end homelessness incorporated mute and to authorize the mayor to execute.
Move, we approve.
Second.
Move in property second that we would approve this recommend, this agreement in the discussion. All in favor? Oppose's name. Item twenty four, in the matter of approval of an investment grade audit agreement with Snyder Electric Building Americas Incorporated and to authorize the mayor to execute.
Move to approve this agreement with Snyder Electric Buildings America Incorporated.
Second.
Move in property second that we would approve this investment of great audit. In the discussion. All in favor? Oppose's name. Item twenty five, in the matter of approval of a permit of Public Works Director.
So move.
Second.
Okay, move in property second. And at this time, Mayor, would you like to present the person that's in line to become the Public Works Director?
I would, and we want to welcome tonight Kelly Knight. Y'all had an opportunity to meet him yesterday. We introduced him this morning at Public Works. He has informed his current employer, M. Diet, that he will be leaving that post upon council's appointment or confirmation. And we'll start with us, about the third week in November, Chuck will be leaving us in the December, so we would like to get him, you know, on board and kind of get him familiar with, with everything in Public Works. And, you know, I think he'll be a great asset to our department and our city.
We applaud Chuck for the great work he has done, and we are happy to have our new person to come on board and be sure he's going to move forward as a, I understand he's worked for the Highway Department for several years, and we know it's going to make the Public Works Department even greater. So at this, we are just really happy to have him. At this time, we will vote to approve our new Public Works Director. All in favor?
I just think.
Okay. There are no, we will now close public work, I mean, regular session. No study items on the agenda. Do we have any need for executive session tonight?
Madam President, we have a late entry on the executive session, the purchase of real property that we've been talking about. The, I think, Don, Stephen, Scott, the mayor, all we need, and Tanner, of course. That's all we need.
Motion to go to executive session.
Okay. Move in property second that we go ahead in the executive session. We thank you for coming tonight, and we will now go into executive session.